Call a meeting to order. Please call the roll.
Mr. Buckner?
Here.
Reverend Campbell?
Here.
Mayor Gilstrap?
Here.
Vice Mayor Jones?
Here.
Dr. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Saunders?
Here.
Mr. Shanks?
Here.
Mr. Vogler?
Here.
Mr. Whittle?
Here.
Please stand for the invocation led by Dr. Gary Miller and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
And Adam New Eve, his wife, and she conceived, and they bear Cain, and she again had his brother Abel. And Abel was a keeper of sheep, but Cain a tiller of the ground. And Cain talked with Abel, his brother, and it came to pass when they were in the field that Cain rose up against his brother and slew him. And the Lord said to Cain, "Where is Abel thy brother?" And he said, "I know not. Am I my brother's keeper?" Let us pray. Another good man has been slain in our city. Heywood Carter has been taken from us. Some of us knew him a few years; others in this room knew him for many years, even were in service in the army with him. But all of us would agree that he was a good man, a kind man. Most of us cannot conceive why anyone would want to slay his brothered man. Why did this happen in our beloved city? Why does it go on and on and on? What can we do to stop the violence, the killing? Lord, help us to find the answers and help us to console the families of those who have died, who have been slain by their own brothers. Our prayers are with their families and with our city. Yes, Lord, we are our brother's keeper. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have a proclamation for Business Appreciation Week. And Eva, I believe you're here, please come forward and accept this as a member of the Chamber Board of Commerce. You may stay right there at the podium. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I would like to accept this proclamation on behalf of the Danville and Pennsylvania County Chamber of Commerce. Thank you.
Thank you. Whereas, the city of Danville is pleased to have a thriving base of business and industry to support the local economy, and whereas, these businesses provide essential employment opportunities for the citizens of the city of Danville, and whereas, these businesses also make significant contributions in our communities to promote educational opportunities for our children and promote a variety of activities which increase the quality of life of the area, and whereas, we recognize and appreciate these businesses. Now therefore, I, John V. Gilstrap, Mayor of the city of Danville, do hereby proclaim June 5 through 9, 2017, as Business Appreciation Week in the city of Danville, given under my hand the 16th day of May, 2017. And I'd also like to call representatives from the Averit Equestrian team. I see Dr. Frank's here, but I don't know who's going to be receiving it on behalf of Averit Certificate of Recognition. Whereas, the Averit University Equestrian Department won their first-team national championship and the Intercollegiate Dressage Association, IDA, national competition in April, and whereas, Averit University's IDA team won the national championship by surpassing several other teams at the IDA National Championship, which was held at the Centenary University in New Jersey. And whereas, the national championship was the first-team title for Averit University. And whereas, Senior Hannah Walters finished seventh in the first-level division; Senior Casey Toth finished first in the upper-training division; Junior Christine Kelly finished fourth in the lower-training division; and Junior Megan Grimes finished second in the intro-division and was named reserve high-point rider for the day. And whereas, the national championship is a testament to the determination and talent of the students, the dedication, and the leadership of Averit University Equestrian Department faculty and staff, and the support of the entire Averit University community. Now therefore, I, John V. Gilstrap, Mayor of the city of Danville, Virginia, do hereby recognize the Averit University Equestrian's Department Intercollegiate Dressage Association team for their national championship and sincerely express gratitude to them for representing Danville, Virginia, and Averit University in such a wonderful manner, given under my hand the 16th day of May, 2017, John V. Gilstrap, Mayor. Congratulations. You want me to come down? Buddy, were you riding, buddy?
Mr. Mayor, if I could, this young lady is very quiet. Ginger Henderson heads up the equestrian program at Averit, was elected last year to the IDA Dressage Hall of Fame herself, and this team has been fighting for this national championship for a number of years. We hosted it at the Chatham about four or five years ago, but we're so proud of them, and she would never say it, but she's the one. She's the brains behind the thing right here.
Communication from visitors. Citizens who desire to speak on matters not listed on the agenda will be heard at this time. Citizens who desire to speak on agenda items will be heard when the agenda item is considered. Anyone wish to speak on non-agenda items? Please come forward, state your name.
My name is Glenn Skares. Mr. Mayor, council members, I would like to speak tonight on something that I just learned is not going to be voted on, and that's the white building purchase. I would like to speak on behalf of all the retired property-owning taxpayers of Danville, and they're not here tonight. So what may transpire later on tonight on another issue is disappointing that more people don't participate. Tonight, I'd like to interject my thoughts on the discussion for purchase of this white building. I'm sure I don't know many of the facts that revolve around this purchase, but I do understand that that purchase was, that building was sold at some point in time. People who bought it are supposed to have been experts in how to rehabilitate it and sell it at a profit. Obviously, that didn't happen. So now the city pays top dollar to buy that property back, I assume through the Industrial Development Authority. If that's true, that particular organization has a terrible track record of being in the real estate business, and I sorely wish Danville would get out of the real estate business. Everything is called an investment, but by pure definition, investment is putting your money into something you have a reasonable expectation of making money on. I don't think IDA has ever demonstrated that ability. You say that it owns approximately $20 million worth of real estate. I've seen and heard estimates much higher than that, but I don't have a definitive record of that. But it seems that the way the story goes, Danville buys, and by Danville, I mean the taxpayer, IDA doesn't have a dime. It comes to you to get the money, you come to me to get the money. I wouldn't call it an investment by pure definition. I don't think it fills that game, but too often I've seen where the transactions that have transpired on things similar to this have ended up with, oh, we'll make a bunch of investment to rehabilitate the property, then we'll lease it, sell it, or rent it to someone, and then we call it a closed deal, even though it might take them 20 years to fulfill their end of it, and the likelihood of all of that going perfect is very small. But nevertheless, we did a good job. I've seen too many of them go for a fraction of what the city paid for them, and I'm sure all of those have some reasonable rationale. This one, I think, is one of the biggest white elephants that ever came down the pike. If you ever were able to do anything with this, it's going to cost the city millions of dollars to do anything with that particular piece of property, even if you just tore it down, which might ultimately be the best idea. I am dead set against it. I think it's a terrible waste of my tax money. I would never do it just as a citizen, and I do not agree at all with this city being so heavily involved in real estate transactions. Your job is to provide infrastructure for this city: roads, water, fire, police. It's not to dabble in real estate. Now, I've heard some people say Danville is, has a nickname of being the Little Detroit on the Dan. I hope that doesn't come true. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak? Please come forward and state your name. Items not on the agenda.
Mayor Gilstrap, panel, my name is Gloria Johnson, and I wanted to come out tonight to express my concerns about the businesses of Danville and the citizens of Danville. I used today, for example, I had an appointment today, and they had given me an appointment to come to this location, another location, and when I got there, I understood that it wasn't ready for business. So when I got back to my home and I called them and asked them what was going on, and they said, "A week ago, they told us we weren't going to move." And I said, "You didn't call me?" So I figure if I had gone out of town to this appointment, I would have been just wasting my time. And this seems to be a pattern for around here. Even people would, you make appointments, they don't follow up, don't call you back, even if you're paying customers. It's just beyond me that I have never seen anything like this. And it's just not one business, but all businesses. And the citizens, it seems like they have adapted the same situation where you ask them or suggest it to them, when you do this, they don't even bother to call you back or follow up. It's just seems so strange that the citizen has gotten into a rut, and I just wondered, is it something that you're not doing or supposed to be doing? It seems like the morale in Danville is so low that nobody wants to be a team player, and it just seems to be a narcissist for each individual. And, you know, that concerns me.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Larkin, let me ask you, if you get with her, with Ms. Charleston and Pacific Department she's referring to, and say we do some follow-up? Anyone else wish to speak on an item not on the agenda? Please come forward and state your name.
Good evening to the mayor, city council, and everyone in attendance. My name is Tammy Reynolds, and I stand before you on behalf of my father, Woollett Morrison, who is a city resident. I would like to start off by saying thank you for the opportunity to stand before you. It has come to our attention through personal experience that there is no facility other than the hospital that will provide trachea, respiratory, and renal care simultaneously in this area. It is our desire that we find and establish a means of provision for such care in our area. We are hoping to create a memorial from the results of this action because of the loss of our loved one who was not able to receive this service. A person should not have to be moved or denied care from a local facility due to insurance reimbursement issues. We are also desiring as well to create some type of funding that will provide the finances for training and necessary equipment to cover this hardship. In most cases, affordability is a factor simply because of limitations of insurance providers. We feel that a single facility can be established in this area with the support of our community that will help reduce the cost per individual so that they will be able to receive the care needed to sustain them during this crisis, as well as being surrounded by family. We are here tonight asking for direction and support. We hope to meet with physicians and other healthcare providers to help create a means for accomplishing our goal. We do not want another family member to suffer hardship and difficult decisions we face to have a loved one given a choice of going to Chicago, Illinois, or Silver Springs, Maryland to facilitate his or her needs. Any facility, physician, or caregiver will tell you interaction with family results is better health for patients. So if a local provider had these facilities, it would make it more optimistic for families to intervene. So what we're saying is that renal care is available here. However, the training and expertise of respiratory care is needed in this area, and we hope that we could have it provided at minimal cost. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on an item not on the agenda? Hearing none, we'll move on to the agenda items. Under Appointments, A, consideration of adopting a resolution appointing W. Clark Whitfield, Jr. as the Deputy City Clerk. Councilman Vogler.
Yes, Mayor, I move we adopt a resolution appointing W. Clark Whitfield, Jr. as Deputy City Clerk for the city of Danville, Virginia.
Is there a second? Councilman Campbell. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mayor Gilstrap?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Dr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Shanks?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Now you can officially call the roll and take minutes. Consideration of approval of minutes from a regular council meeting held on April 18, 2017. Councilman Buckner?
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the minutes from a regular meeting held April 18, 2017.
Is there a second? Councilman Saunders. Discussion, please call the roll.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mayor Gilstrap?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Dr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Shanks?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Consideration of adopting an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2017 budget to transfer funds in support of capital and blight projects. What is your pleasure? Councilman Vogler?
Yes, Mayor, I move we adopt an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2017 budget appropriation ordinance by transferring $186,199.83 from the fund balance of the general fund and $23,194.64 from carryforward of restricted cash to support of capital projects, blight-removal project, and appropriating the same.
Is there a second to the motion? Councilman Buckner, discussion on the motion? Please call the roll.
Mayor Gilstrap?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Dr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Shanks?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Item B, consideration of approving a resolution for the fiscal year 2018 Danville Public School Budget. What is your pleasure? Dr. Miller?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve the budget of the school board of the city of Danville for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2018.
Is there a second? Councilman Vogler, discussion on the motion? Councilman Saunders?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is going to be pretty tough for me, so please give me a couple of minutes, please. I am a documented, long-time supporter of Danville Public Schools and wanted very badly to support the original $2.1 million request. I know Danville's students represent the future of our city. They deserve the very best education they can get. I know that many public schools are facing challenges as never before, especially those cities and jurisdictions with demographics like Danville. Accordingly, sufficient funding is imperative. The question is, how much? At the last joint city council school board meeting, we were given data, and some showed a continuous decline in enrollment, not surprising to me, meaning less money for the school system from the state, again, not surprising. Less school systems were or are accredited, declining numbers in our city. State requirements for school system and more are very challenging, and so on, and so on, and so on. Because I had been hearing and seeing similar trends for a few years now, even before those meetings, for me, the question becomes, what is the long-term plan to address these challenges? What is the projected cost? When can we expect to see performance improvement? In January of this year, I asked for a three-year plan that addresses the above going forward that shows how Danville Public Schools intend to address these matters. I think it is a fair question, based on several years of trends, at no fault of Danville Public Schools, no fault of the school system. It is understood such plan is not a gotcha, not you told me this last year, you changed it, you changed it, you changed it. All plans can be changed. A plan is just an idea of future needs, just to give council an idea of what be needed and the costs associated with such needs. I repeated this request at the joint city council school board retreat in February of this year. I have repeatedly asked for this information since the February retreat. It has now been nearly five months, and I still do not have the information. I saw the one-page document the city manager shared with me, which was not a three-year plan, and I was not given a copy of that. Maybe with the work in progress, I don't know. I believe Danville Public Schools has years of more than enough data, trends, that can be used to easily compile, develop such a picture of future needs. I do not believe that it takes five months to do it. This is most disappointing, and my first such experience with Danville Public School System in 20 years, in 20 years. Regardless of my vote tonight, I want the student, teachers, and staff to know that I remain a strong supporter of all of their efforts for our success. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Campbell?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make an amend to the resolution, amend the resolution that the schools are asking for $200,000 above the 1.4. We have made in our retreat that education is one of our priorities, top priorities of the three that we asking for. And talking with the school administration, why do they need the money? It's clear to me that it's definitely a need.
Excuse me, Councilman Campbell, can we get your amendment on the floor with a second, and then we'll discuss it?
I'd like to amend.
Your amendment was to increase it to 1.6 above what they had received last year.
They allocated 1.4, and they asked for the $200,000.
And the present is 1.4, is that correct? Above?
Mine says 1.6.
Pardon? What is the motion as it reads in the minutes? I thought it was 1.4 above, and you're going to amend it to 1.6 above what they received last year.
Could we get confirmation from the budget team if someone's here?
I'm sorry.
Confirmation of the original as printed, whether it included 1.6 or what it did include additional funding? Is there anybody?
I can verify that.
Further?
The ordinance has a total amount appropriated. Yes, I am concerned, and I listened to Councilman Saunders closely what you were saying, and I agree with a lot that you were saying. We do realize that we have a decrease of students within the school system, and it's roughly around ten-thousand dollars per student when you add up local, state, and feds monies that we give for each student. That's a problem. But I see a difference of some of the changes they have made. I personally feel that the school system, if they didn't really, really need the two-hundred-thousand dollars, they would not be asking for. But my major concern is, this is one of the top priorities that council set, and we realize that education is a major piece, and I think we're moving in the right direction. I do agree with Councilman Saunders that we need a better, stronger direction for the future. We gave them one-point-four last year extra, and we're looking at, we're giving them one-point-four plus hopefully the two-hundred-thousand, and we need a better direction for the future of which way the school board is going, and the school system is moving. But I think it's important at this time that we do allocate the extra two-hundred-thousand dollars for the school system. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Shanks?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. The original motion included one-point-four million dollars of taxpayer money increase from last year. Last year, city council approved taxpayer monies in the amount of one-point-four million prior compared to the prior year. So over the last two years, we've increased funding two-point-eight million dollars. I understand the needs that the school system needs. I also understand the needs that city council, city government needs, and we've spent the last three months trying to come to terms with the city budget and what the taxpayer is gonna have to help out more on. And I would say, I like Councilman Saunders, support Danville Public Schools, and I support the children and staff there, but there's a limit to how much annual increases can keep the city taxpayer can keep absorbing. So I will regretfully be voting against the amendment, but I would ask that other council members consider how much increase in expenditures we've already approved over the last two budgets. Thank you.
Councilman Miller?
Yeah, again, this was one of the three priorities. I think this is the top priority, because everything else depends on educating our students. The crime, people having jobs, all this depends on education. What Councilman Shanks didn't mention, in the four years prior to the last two years, we didn't increase the school budget at all. We were fixed. We fell further and further and further behind. We're behind other school systems in what they spend. We're not gonna make up the gap completely between what we spend and what Chesterfield County spends, or Faukeira County spends, or other counties do. But we're not, if we don't give them at least some more monies, we're not even gonna close the gap. There are positions they need to close this gap, content specialists, social workers. Again, I don't, you know, you didn't need social workers when I went through, but you do now, because the schools have become the parents for the children, but it's a fact of life. We're not gonna close the gap unless we give them more money, and it costs more money to educate children now than it did five or ten years ago, per child. Cities all around the Commonwealth spend a lot more on their children than we do, and we need to do this, give as much as possible. I would've gone with the two-point-one million, but I realized we couldn't come up with the funds. So I think we at least need to give them one-point-six in additional funds. You know, we can find the two-hundred-thousand dollars in the budget. I guess, you know, we're giving a million and a half to the school stadium, budgeted, and I'm one of the biggest proponents in renovating that stadium, but you know, I think the school system would rather have two-hundred-thousand dollars for the children, maybe two-hundred-thousand dollars less there, I don't know. I think we can find that amount. So I'd be for increasing it to one-point-six. Thank you.
And before I come to Councilman Shanks, let me ask city manager, the additional two-hundred-thousand, do you have thoughts of where we're gonna generate that revenue?
I have some, one thought was what Dr. Miller had mentioned, could reduce the amount that's been set aside for the stadium for the one year, then in the upcoming fiscal year, you'd have to figure out a way to find an ongoing revenue source for it. There is the option of the personal property tax would generate more revenue next year.
So if I understand you correctly, you're saying from the, I think it's one-point-six million for the stadium? What did we?
One-point-five.
One-point-five, reducing that to one-point-three, or doing what with it?
Yeah.
Just reducing it to one-point-three and leaving a remainder there?
Yeah.
Okay, Councilman Shanks?
All right, two things. I just wanted, well, along that thought, what that taking the two-hundred-thousand out of the stadium fund would accomplish is a short fix for a long problem. The long problem is this, that one-point-two million that's gonna be, that is proposed, the extra two-hundred-thousand dollars that is being proposed tonight in the amendment is an ongoing expense, so next year, you need to come up with that, and every year thereafter, two-hundred-thousand, plus whatever else is adjusted in the budget. But I did wanna clarify one point that the Councilman Miller made, and that was with regard to the school system not getting any increases the last four or five years prior to last year. And that was an agreement that council and the school board came to when the student population had continued to decrease for over a decade, and we continued to operate what then became too many schools. And at that time, city council allocated some extra money in order to facilitate the closing of some schools, and that-
Two million.
Two million, okay, and that was the reason why the increases didn't take place, because the school board was paying those monies back to council, or not to council, to the city. So I just wanna make that point of clarification.
Councilman Buckner?
Yeah, Mayor, thank you. This has been a tough one for me. This is something that I was strongly against, the extra two-hundred-thousand. Up until this week, speaking with several different people in the community, speaking with community leaders as well, I feel like it is definitely a need. It's something that we set forward as a council in our retreat. My biggest thing is, I'd like to see the school system, the administrators held more accountable for what they're spending, and you know, I'd like to see it going to the right places, not just spent on luxuries. Anyway, so I will be supporting this. It's, I've been back and forth with it, and the only way that we're gonna progress is to invest in our future, and our future are our children, so thank you very much, Mayor.
Councilman Vogler?
Yeah, I like Councilman Buckner, I have kind of gone, weighed this one back and forth, and I don't think it's been any secret, in years past, I've had some differences with the school board, and in fact, I think there were some years I was the only one who voted against their proposed budget, and for various reasons. The contingency fund was obviously one thing that we used to talk about a lot, and I will mention that when I started on council, the school board used to budget, I believe, a million dollars in a contingency fund. This year, I think it's down to one-hundred-thousand, two-hundred-thousand, I mean, they've really come down, they have gotten that down to what most would look at as a true contingency fund. They have made a lot of efforts to do things that council has asked or looked at in the years past. In regards to the additional two-hundred-thousand that we're talking about, I'd be right there with those who say, you know, at some point, you've gotta ask for results for what's being given, if you're just, if they're just asking for more money for the sake of having it. The money they're talking about, they have shown us specific positions that they intend to hire and bring on with this funding, and not only this positions, but given examples about where those positions have been utilized, and the success that other places had with these positions. And I think Councilman Buckner was alluding to it, and I don't think it's any secret, people understand how important it is our public school system succeed in Danville for our city to succeed. I mean, we could have, and I think we do have, the best economic development director anywhere around, but you could have the best guy, and he could do everything he can to bring in industries, and even if we're able to get him here, we have a hard time getting the folks to wanna live in the city, because they say, well, I hear your schools are bad. I hear your schools are having trouble, which, you know, sometimes I think that that's a little out of proportion. I don't think that that's necessarily the case, but that perception is becoming reality, and it's become an anchor on everything that we try to do. We had three goals that we set out: reduce violent crime, improve our education, and grow Danville. You can't grow Danville if you don't improve our education, and I don't think money alone is gonna solve it. And I'll say that if this is passed tonight, a year from now, I'm gonna be one of the loudest people saying, okay, show us what that return on investment was. You hire these positions, now show us what the progress has been. But I did wanna mention, one of the positions that they intend to hire is a fundraising position, a position of someone who's gonna be hired with a specific purpose of partnering with the community, to go to nonprofits, to go to businesses, to go to, you know, various organizations and find funding for our school system. And if you look across the country at any urban public school system that has a lot of the impoverished student population like we have, that this is how, one of the ways they're able to turn things around, because the funding is tough. I mean, with the state level and localities, we only have so much that we can do, but when you partner with this, you're able to find that other funding, and so I think that position is important, and I think that that will hopefully lessen the burden that comes to council each year moving forward, because we're not gonna be able to continue to increase each year and each year and each year. But we do need to see improvement in our school system. And so, look, do I agree with a hundred percent of everything that they may have in their budget? No, but I don't agree with a hundred percent of everything that's in our budget. So how can I expect them to align a hundred percent with me when I, we can't even do that with our own budget? I believe in the goals that they're trying to do, and I know how important it is for Danville's future that our school system succeed, so I support the amended motion that's on the floor. Thank you, Mayor.
Certainly. Please state your name.
My name is Wayne Moser. I'm a teacher at OT Bonner Middle School, and a member of the DEA and the VEA, and also a citizen of the United States. And I thank you for doing your duty tonight, and I appreciate Mr. Saunders's remarks, and I appreciate all your remarks. One of the questions asked about was the two-hundred-thousand dollars. As I stated previously when I spoke to you on April eighteenth, two-hundred-thousand dollars would get me an improvement in our reading program. How? I could get two after-school buses that could take eighty kids two days a week home after they stay after school doing reading and writing projects. We had that at Gibson, if you remember at Gibson, we had accreditation in reading, because we had after-school programs. We have not had an after-school program since I left Gibson in two thousand and thirteen. We have not had activity buses except for during remediation time periods. The two-hundred-thousand dollars would help with the reading programs, because we have two buses, two bus drivers that could drive the kids home with after-school activities. That would be helpful with the remediation and reading programs that we need to improve our schools, because this is where the problem is. In elementary schools and the middle schools, our kids are reading below grade level. In the high school, yes, we're asking for a grant for three-thousand dollars, we get reading fiction books, but we have a problem with all the kids being able to read those books, because they're below reading grade level. It's a problem that shows up on our tests. I'm asking you for that two-hundred-thousand dollars extra, so I can get an after-school reading program for our kids. Put their kids first, and then you're gonna put your community first. Thank you.
Councilman Miller?
Yeah, just to piggyback on what Councilman Miller said, in our mentor city, Greenville, South Carolina, which helped to start all this renovation, they actually went out and recruited private partnerships for their school system, and got an entire STEM science and math school donated without cost to that city. We could do the same. We've had very little input from our private industries, so that's a critical position that we need. And the other thing, I think no matter how this vote goes, I don't think there's a councilman up here that is not asking and demanding that we see results. You know, if we're gonna give this additional money, or any monies to the school system, we've got to see what it accomplished, and we realize it's, we're not gonna turn the school system around overnight, but we need to see that we're making progress. Thank you.
Councilman Shanks?
Yeah, I'm not meaning to prolong the conversation. I did wanna make two or three points. Tonight, we're not voting on buses for after-school care, that's not in the budget, not in the school board budget now. That sounds like a brilliant idea, and I would hope the administration would back that, but that's not what we're voting on tonight. And Mr. Vogler talked about expecting results next year. Well, what did we expect when we increased the budget last year by one-point-four million dollars? I think we expected results. In the meantime, and I'm not laying any blame, but in the meantime, I would say we've lost more schools getting SOLs accreditation and things like that. I'm not, don't mean to be critical, but my last point is, the two-hundred-thousand dollars included, I mean, the school board budget included somewhere close to two-hundred-thousand dollars for additional administrative positions. It's a shame we're not fighting here tonight over teacher salaries and teacher compensation, but we're fighting over additional administrative positions, which seems to be the policy of the majority of new administrators that we have come to our city. So I don't mean to sound hard or harsh, but I believe two-point-eight million dollar increase over the last two years is a substantial increase, and it's not like we're not supporting the top three things that we decided were the city's priorities. That's, that tonight, one-point-two million dollars is new money for the school system, and that's supporting the school system. And I'm not gonna argue anymore, I'm just trying to make a couple of points, and because I'm not an ogre, I understand everybody's in need, and the city taxpayers are also.
You wanna hear my arguments again?
I've heard them. Do you want me to give you, I can give you, I can give you your arguments if you want. I've heard them so many times.
Let me just, Mr. Scars, please come forward. You wanna speak on this agenda item? Scars, please state your name.
Hello, Scars. You folks have been fighting the wrong problem since the early sixties as far as your schools are concerned. Everybody in this room knows what the problem is. Nobody, just like with ISIS, will identify it. The problem is welfare. I went to Bellevue Elementary School, probably the worst school in Danville that's ever existed. I got a good education with one teacher and a full class, and if you wanted to eat lunch, you had to walk across the playground to the lunchroom. You can pay your teachers a million dollars a year, it's not gonna make any difference. It's not a teacher problem, it's a learning problem. There are kids in Africa in a mud hut, one teacher, thirty kids. By golly, if that child has a desire and a motivation to learn, he will learn, and she will learn. It all boils down to, you've given too much in this country and asked absolutely nothing in return, and that's exactly what you've gotten. Kids are taken care of from the time they're born-
Nobody, just like with ISIS, will identify it. The problem is welfare. I went to Bellevue Elementary School, probably the worst school in Danville that's ever existed. I got a good education with one teacher and a full class, and if you wanted to eat lunch, you had to walk across the playground to the lunchroom. You can pay your teachers a million dollars a year, it's not going to make any difference. It's not a teacher problem. It's a learning problem. There are kids in Africa in a mud hut, one teacher, 30 kids. By golly, if that child has a desire and a motivation to learn, he will learn and she will learn. It all boils down to, you've given too much in this country and asked absolutely nothing in return, and that's exactly what you've gotten. Kids are taken care of from the time they're born till the time they die, except the black By the time he turns 18 with no education, no sense of justice and responsibility, he doesn't have any options left. Who did that? A mother who was just interested in a paycheck but wasn't interested in having those children and had no interest in taking care of them. And if you go to school board meetings or school functions, you'll see that nobody's there. The interest has to come from the parents. This whole welfare structure is wrong. There needs to be a mother, there needs to be a father, and there needs to be some serious incentives to make sure that your child can and will perform in school. Otherwise, you're spinning your wheels, and like I said, you've been at it since the 1960s and it hasn't got you anywhere. Every year goes up. Until you can honestly look at that problem and address it for what it is, nothing's going to change. Danville is unique only in one perspective. Danville made a conscious choice to promote Danville being a welfare town. That was a conscious choice made. It brought in people from the outside because you had very liberal welfare distributions here in Danville. Other places didn't. Consequently, they're doing so much better. Thank you.
Point of order. Go ahead.
Go ahead, vote on it.
Well, we can, but citizens can speak on agenda items. And, ma'am, come forward, state your name. Let me request that we stay on the agenda items and not other items. The agenda item is $200,000 more dollars for schools. Yes, ma'am. State your name.
Yes, Crystal Cops. I'm here tonight with my two kids. Both of them are students in Danville Public Schools. And my husband is here also, and we're also speaking on behalf of the organization, Parents of the Schools. The $200,000, I believe as Mr. Lee Vogler has said, those four positions cover $200,000. So they have shown a need for it. I think I've only been attending since like November, but it's clear to me that the money is needed. So I don't know why we're still talking about it, because it's needed. And you have parents who are looking at pulling their kids if city council doesn't step up. It's really just that simple. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me just say that I understand some of the frustrations and some of the concerns, but let me just add that education is, and educating our children is the most important thing we do. We cannot afford for our children not to be educated. I'll support the amendment. Please come forward, state your name.
Good evening. My name is Sheila Vanez. I wasn't going to speak, but after listening to some conversations, I think that I too should say the way I feel. I'm glad many members of council applaud the efforts of our new superintendent. Many of you have said that you think he is the right person for the job and an excellent choice. I agree with you. He seems to be the man that our school system needs. I also believe that we have a commitment from our school board to try to make changes in our school system. And I believe that they realize the importance of keeping things in place. We've had too many changes through the years, and it's hurt our system. Now, if you're going to believe that you have the right person in place, then you're going to have to show that you support that person, not just by saying, "Oh, yes, he's the right person." You're going to have to do it by supporting what he's trying to do. Now, I was at one of the meetings, and he clearly laid out a picture of what they wanted to use the money for. I understand that Mr. Larkin has a good relationship with him, and he understands what's going on. That was the best presentation I had seen between the two bodies in many, many years, maybe the best I've ever seen. But I thought all of you were on the same page after you made your pledge for the three important issues in the city. And you're right, Mr. Vogler. We cannot succeed if our schools and our students do not succeed. So I speak in support of the amendment, the change, and I think that we have to give them time to make change. These problems didn't occur overnight. They're not going away overnight. So, you know, it's time to step up to the plate, do it, support them, and let's see what happens, and we can all work together to try to improve our city, our schools, and the education for our students. Thank you.
Councilman Vogler.
Yeah, just real quick, a few more points, and then I'm done with this issue. Mrs. Vanez just made a great point, actually, kind of took the words right out of my mouth in that this, the issues that our school system has faced particularly in the last few years did not happen overnight. And it's not going to be solved overnight, but if you make incremental change that is reasonable in terms of funding, you can begin to turn the tide. And from what I've heard from people this year, there have been improvements. Still a lot of challenges, absolutely, but it has been better in some regards. Just real quick, the students, the kids that we have particularly now in high school and even older in middle school, these are the kids who grew up in a decade of decline. They grew up in Danville when things were really, really bad, before we started to turn things around in the last five to six years. The first decade, I think people may be forgetting how bad it got here. Lost the mill, you lost all these jobs. You had a national recession that compounded on top of all this. The children that we have in our school system now, particularly high school kids, they have grown up in a city in decline with wages in decline. And so you are going to have to, we are dealing with the ramifications of that. That doesn't get turned around overnight. It's not going to get turned around if we just, you know, stick our heads in the sand and put our heels in the mud and say, "Well, we're not going to change anything, we're not going to do anything." And again, I expect, and in the past, I have been probably harder on the school board and the school system than maybe anybody else up here, and voted against them in the past when I didn't think that they were explaining what they needed the money for. For the record, Councilman Shanks voted for every one of their budgets. So this year, there has been more information shared, and I think a year from now, we'll be able to ask, "This position, this position, this position. Now show us where the improvement was made." Again, I support it. I think a majority of council does. I'm ready for the vote.
Is that a call for question, or are you ready to?
Yes.
I second that, Mr. Mayor.
All right, I believe call for question, you do not have any discussion, right?
That's correct.
So, the amendment, additional $200,000. Please call the roll.
One question, Mr. Mayor, before we take the vote, if I could.
Okay.
Since this is over $10,000, we need six votes or five, or majority?
This is a resolution, so we only need five votes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
This is not approval of the budget.
Right, and that's correct. And this is only for the amendment, and then if the amendment passes, we will vote on the motion as amended. If it doesn't pass, we'll vote on the original motion. So this is just for the amendment.
Voting just to amend it. Call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Jones.
I, Alonso L. Jones, do hereby state that I have a conflict of interest regarding the consideration of adopting a resolution approving the budget of the school board of the City of Danville for the fiscal year 2018, ending on June 30, 2018, listed on the agenda as Old Business Item B. Therefore pursuant to the State and Local Government Conflict of Interest Act, Virginia Code 2.2, 3112, I must abstain from voting on the agenda item.
Dr. Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Saunders.
No.
Mr. Shanks.
No.
Mr. Vogler.
Aye.
Mr. Whittle. Mr. Buckner.
Aye.
Reverend Campbell.
Aye.
Mayor Gilstrap. Passes 5-4.
5-3.
5-3.
5-3, one abstain. 5-3 and one abstain. Now, the vote on the motion as amended, which would be a $1.6 million increase, which by the way is what was proposed by the city manager. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
No.
I'm sorry. Councilman Saunders.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just three points. One is, I talked about Danville demographic. We have a lot of poverty. But I want to make it clear, poor children can learn. Because your family may not have resources, children can learn regardless of their condition, although poverty is not a plus. But I don't want anybody thinking that poor people, poor children, cannot learn. Secondly, I said I looked forward to supporting the original 2.1 million. I was prepared to support the 1.4. But quite frankly, I felt that my, my issue is, I felt that my request was simply ignored, and that bothered me. Thank you, Mayor.
I have Councilman Campbell next to you. Do you have a comment?
No, no, I made my.
Councilman Vogler.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify in case there was any confusion. I don't want anyone to think I am insinuating that people who are not as well off as others cannot learn. Certainly not my intent, in case that was thought of. I strictly pointed that out for the purpose of saying that to assume that our students today can learn in the same environment, or we fund it the same way that we did 15, 20, 25 years ago, is just simply not the case, and that there are challenges they face today that students didn't face here 25, 30, 40 years ago. And that was the purpose of my point. Thank you.
Councilman Miller.
Just a quick point. From what I've heard from the school board, the raises will go forth to the teachers. That's regardless of where we settle with this. That's a priority, raising the teachers, because we have to attract teachers, we have to keep teachers, and we have to make our salaries more competitive. And again, this is a new world. I mean, you know, 20 years ago, if you wanted to drop out of school, you could walk down and get a job at the mill with a handsome wage, 30 years ago. Where I grew up in the coal mine area, if you didn't want to finish school, you could get a job in the coal mine paying a lot of money. But those days are gone. Coal mines are closed down, textile mills are closed down. The school systems have to educate their children in a new world. That's why we've appropriated the money for the precision engineering. That's why we have to continue to find programs that teach the children that once they step off that stage at their diploma, they have a reasonable, very reasonable expectation of getting a job because they have a skill. Thank you.
Please call the roll. Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me. School board member, Mr. Golds, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will be brief. I do not want to prolong your discussion any longer than it needs to be. First, I want to let you know that I'm here representing my colleagues on the school board tonight. The majority of them, as well as Dr. Jones, are out at the institute for what is one of our premier events in Danville Public Schools every year, and that is our Graduates of Distinction Ceremony. If you want to see many of our best and brightest, who not only excel in the classroom, but have demonstrated absolutely exemplary character, you can see it tonight at the institute. I want to share with you that Danville Public Schools and our school board in particular, we welcome accountability. We welcome accountability from the residents of the city. We've been living in an accountability-driven world for two decades now with the state standards of learning. And no one in this room, no one in the city wants to see results more than my colleagues and I on the school board. And I can tell you that we are focused like a laser, and we are tireless in wanting to move the needle on results in our system. As some of you have indicated tonight, we did not get here overnight. And it is a metaphor that I think is often overused, but is particularly applicable in a situation like this. We are trying to turn a battleship. We are fighting against forces that are greater than any of us. They are forces that are affecting communities just like ours all over the country. And I appreciate that this body has been such a terrific partner with us in recent years. We have to invest, we have to be wise about those investments. I understand exactly where some of your concerns are coming from. Please know that we will work, just as we have, to address those concerns. We recognize that money does not fix all problems, but there are many problems that we have that we need to invest in, that we have not invested in in the past. Much of where we stand financially is a result of the one-size-fits-all funding approach that the Commonwealth of Virginia uses. It looks at the wealth of individual communities, but it does not look at the needs of the students in those communities. And the, our students have tremendous needs, their potential is even greater, and I think you can see that tonight out at the institute. And so on behalf of my colleagues on the school board, I thank you for how thoughtfully and diligently you have approached this, but absolutely encourage you to support the full $1.6 million. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Call the roll on the amended motion, please.
Mayor.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
The amended motion is saying.
The amended motion adds $200,000 to the amount of money, the extra money that council will be giving for a total of $1.6 million. Thank you.
Councilman Shanks.
My only comment is, the last discussion was entirely about $200,000.
I'm sorry.
The last discussion was entirely about $200,000. Therefore.
Supposedly, yeah.
Yeah, well, therefore, I was opposed to that. However, I'm certainly not opposed to the school budget. So I just want to make that clarification.
Okay, thank you.
So this is a motion to pull one point, six million.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And approving the overall school budget.
Well, it's 1.6 more than last year. Please call the roll.
Dr. Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Saunders.
No.
Mr. Shanks.
Aye.
What was that?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler.
Aye.
Mr. Whittle.
Aye.
Mr. Buckner.
Aye.
Reverend Campbell.
Aye.
Mayor Gilstrap.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Jones.
Motion carries. Item C. These are several. We're going to take these one at a consideration of approving ordinance to increase rates for meals, lodging, personal property, and airplane taxes. We will take these one at a time. The first one is an ordinance amending and reordaining Section 37. Well, I'm not going to read the motion to you. What's your pleasure? Do I get a motion on the floor for item one? Dr. Miller.
Yeah, I propose an ordinance, amending and reordaining Section 37-141 of Danville City Code, increase the tax on meals served in restaurants or by caterers from 6% to 7% effective July 1, 2017. Final adoption.
Councilman Campbell, second. Discussion on the motion. Councilman Shanks.
I'll be as brief as I can, but I need a couple of minutes, if you don't mind, Mayor. I've been on council, and it's worked on nine budgets with city council. This is my ninth. I believe this is the first year that I will vote in opposition to the city budget. In negotiations, I've always believed there has been considerably more good than bad in a budget that we have voted on in the last nine years. Four of the next five tax increases I'm opposed to and cannot support. Through all the deliberations on this budget, even though I requested, never requested it. even though I requested, never requested, never was serious consideration given to reducing services, removing more vacant positions, or reducing other unfilled positions. I even requested a voluntary hiring freeze be implemented by the manager in a work session. Certainly not a council action, but it's just a request. And in the last thirty to forty-five days, I've seen continual advertisements for positions to be filled. In 2012, we had a reduction forced due to budget constraints. Forty-some jobs were eliminated. Today, there are more full-time jobs than there were in 2012 prior to eliminating forty positions. Every time we met to resolve budget shortfalls, council never looked seriously at minimizing expenditures. Instead, council totally looked at increasing taxes. Practically all taxes. Practically all that council can increase, or can authorize. Up until now, Danville's had the benefit of having a reputation as a low-tax, low-cost-of-living city. This is indeed a good selling point, which is not only good for our population, but is also good for economic development. So my comments apply to this and several of the next items. I will be voting no toward raising the meals tax from six to seven percent, which will make Danville the higher than all nearby jurisdictions except Martinsville. That means we will be higher than Roanoke, Salem, Lynchburg, and all surrounding jurisdictions. After raising the meals tax to seven percent, and then adding the paltry state tax of 5.3 percent, the business, the customer that goes to a restaurant is going to have to pay 12.3 percent if this passes, extra in taxes. This will not be good for business, nor the population, and especially not good for the lower-income and elderly, fixed-income portions of the population. So I'll be voting no on this, and I would ask that other members of council consider it likewise. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Councilman Vogler?
Yeah, this is, uh, actually one, and we're just discussing the meals tax right now, but, um, Councilman Shanks and I actually agree on this one. I, I would point out, and Councilman Shanks made some points already, but a few things in regard to this meals tax. And, uh, this is one that I've wrestled with, because I understand the, the amount of revenue that it, it would potentially generate. We're talking about 1.2 million dollars, but I think Fred just mentioned, even at six percent where we're at, we're already one of the highest in the state. I know we're going to talk about the real estate tax in a little bit, in which we are at the bottom. We're like the lowest. Uh, this is the reverse of that. We're actually one of the highest, and if we go to seven percent, uh, unless there's some more increases coming in the next couple of weeks that I'm not aware of, but looking at it today, seven percent would tie us for second highest in the state. Um, that, again, I understand the revenue that would come to this. I'm not faulting anybody who, who intends on voting for this. I understand exactly where you're coming from and, and what we're trying to achieve. But I also know our city's demographics, what our income level is, what our poverty level is. Um, I'm not rich by any means, but, you know, I could probably live with this increase, but I know a lot of our citizens cannot. Um, I know some folks refer to a meals tax as a luxury tax, but I don't think so. Um, you know, you don't necessarily have to own a car. You don't have to own a house, but everybody has to eat. And, um, so this is going to impact people in their daily lives. Um, so for me, it's different than the real estate tax adjustment we're going to be talking about later, because in that one, we are one of the lowest. This one, we're already one of the highest. We're looking at a real estate tax adjustment because we should, because we have been artificially and abnormally low. And we were low to begin with, and councils previously kept cutting it and cutting it and cutting it. But the meals tax is the exact opposite. We're already one of the highest. Uh, this came up, actually, somebody pointed it out to me earlier today. My first budget we went through when I was on council, a meals tax increase was proposed, just like the one we're talking about tonight. And at the time, I looked at the minutes, I said, "The meals tax is the only revenue stream that had improved in the past few years." And at that time, that was 2012, 2013. Why fix what isn't broken? You know, we went through some tough times here where revenue streams started to dry up. The meals tax revenue kept chugging along. And so, and if I'm not mistaken, it was increased not too long ago. It was four percent. It went to six. It could go to seven. I mean, it, we're looking at it because we could, not because we should, and that's, I, I'm voting against the meals tax increase. Thank you.
You know, in all due respect to all council members, and, and, uh, I respect your vote, but it, it's easy to vote no, but it's difficult to come up with solutions. So if we're going to reduce $1 million, tell me where we're going to have to reduce it, or where are we going to generate the revenue? And I'll get to you, Mr. Shanks. Uh, Councilman Miller?
Yeah, uh, well, you know, you don't have to go eat out at a restaurant. This is for restaurants and caterers. Now, many people are from other towns. I don't think anybody's going to stop and not come to Danville because they have to pay another penny on, or another dollar out of a hundred-dollar bill. I mean, uh, you know, and I think this is, as the mayor pointed out, this is part of our package to come up with enough revenue. We're barely coming up with enough revenue. The other thing I want to say is, uh, for the last, for cutting services for the last, I don't know, three, four budget cycles, the city managers, uh, Mr. King and then Mr. Larkin, have said, "We need to come up with more funds." And we, we've avoided that, uh, and they cut services as much as they can. But you can only cut your services so much. Or you'll end up like Richmond, where private citizens are having to go out and use their mowers to cut the parks, or, or cut the median strips on the, on the avenues or the sidewalks, because they've cut their public works to nonexistent. Richmond right now is trying to, trying to come up with money for police and schools, but they don't want to raise taxes. They're having a hard time figuring how to do that. You can't. If you want more services, police, fire, safety, and to grow Danville, you, you've got to have more revenue. We've looked at this for three years and avoided raising taxes. That's why we've come to this point. Thank you.
Councilman Shanks?
Uh, yes, Mayor. I, I just had a couple thoughts that, uh, that had come to mind. I understand that, uh, we want to do things here in Danville, but there are things that can't, with a budget the size of ours, I, I can't imagine there are not places. And that was my point earlier, is we never, even though I asked, we never talked about, uh, cutting some services or other ways to save money. That never was presented to us. Now we're being asked to vote on something and being told, "If you don't vote on it, then, then you need to figure out where it's coming from." No, I don't. No, I don't. That's what staff's for. And there are a couple items right here that, uh, people are going to vote either for or against, and every one of them can either add to or take away from the expenditures and the revenue. Uh, but in terms of, if, if, if this doesn't pass, or some of the others don't pass, then staff will have to come back with, to us with recommendations. And that's what should have already happened, that we didn't, we didn't require it as a council. That should have been required by council, in my opinion.
But let me just say in response, is that the, the staff did do, they were, they did reduce it. They come in at the very first one with, with fifteen cents tax and a lot of taxes, and then, and they reduced it. We're, we're talking about here, this one percent on meals being equivalent, well, let me just say, um, are you going to reduce police, fire, or schools? Because that's the majority of our budget. The rest of it, you going to nickel and dime it, or are you going to generate revenue?
Now, we've had this discussion.
And also, we have had this discussion.
You're discussing back and forth with me, so I should be allowed to answer.
But for, I will come back to you.
Well, well, wait there.
Now, I want a clarification. When's the last time we've increased the meals tax?
I don't remember the last. I, I'm not sure what the last time.
Well, it hasn't been in six years since I've been on council.
Right.
Hmm?
You're right. It hasn't been.
Okay. All right. Mr. Shanks, go ahead.
My point is, we all, all, every one of us have agreed not to, uh, do anything to affect the, the public safety portion of the budget.
Now, I wouldn't say all of us have agreed to that.
I don't know. I would say it was unanimous in the work session as far as, I, I am saying not to cut anything in public safety. Are you saying there were some members that wouldn't do that?
I'm simply saying that, um, part of public safety is more than police and fire. There's a lot more to public. Education's a major and part of that. Uh, after-school services, many things that we can do to reduce and keep our citizens safe. And, and I'm just saying is, um...
I'm talking in general terms.
I support our police department, but they can't prevent crime. They, they come into action when crime occurs.
We're getting way off topic, but I, I, I would tell you, in the sense of generally considered, what public safety includes, there's not a member of council that is not in support of that. And so, your, your question about reducing funding for public safety is a no-starter, because none of us would ever consider that, if you consider public safety the way it is normally considered. Now, uh, so I, I, I mean, I just, well, I'll leave alone at that.
Any other discussion?
Yes, one question.
Councilman Jones, and then Councilman Campbell.
I yield to Councilman Campbell.
Okay, thank you. If I'm not mistaken, we was one of the budget. Each department made their presentation. And within their presentation, we analyzed and scrutinized everything that they said, what we approved and what they didn't approve. So I'm falling back on the concept of, if we want to cut, cut what? Nobody, I think, wants to see any type of increase in taxes at all. But there's a problem. And being council and the city, we have problems with our citizens when we are not able to render service to our community. That's a problem. So what I have seen doesn't need what they're asking for. If we solve that that part of department is not efficient, we have seen cutbacks in different departments they've been doing for a number of years, where are we going to cut? If we, if you said that we should cut back on something, we had the opportunity to do that. There was a major discussion on that, and we didn't see anything where we should cut back. How can we cut back? We want to see a cutback, but we know that there's a constant increase to maintain services where we are. Increases of salaries, increase of utilities, that's just an increase. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Jones?
Mr. Mayor, we've had these discussions in work session over and over again. I'd like to call for the question, please.
Call for the question. All in favor of the, uh, item one under the rate increases? Um, please call or roll.
Mr. Saunders?
Yes.
Mr. Shanks?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
No.
Mr. Whittle?
No.
Mr. Buckner?
No.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mayor Gilstrap?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Dr. Miller?
Aye.
I have five-four?
That's right. The motion fails.
You got to have six?
Yes, sir.
Okay, motion fails. Number two?
Now we've got to come up with another increase.
What's your pleasure on number two? Have a motion. Councilman Campbell?
Mr. Mayor, I move for an ordinance adopting and amending, reordaining the section thirty-seven dash ninety-seven of Danville City Code and increasing tax on transit lodgings from six percent to seven percent, effective July 1st, 2017.
Second to the motion. Second, Councilman Vogler. Any discussion? Councilman Shanks?
I'll be brief. I'll be real brief. Danville, seven percent. Lynchburg, 5.5 percent. Martinsville, two percent. South Boston, 5.5 percent. Greensburg, three percent. Eden, two percent. Reedsville, two percent. Roxbury, zero percent. That puts our lodging businesses, owners in a distinct disadvantage. I believe we should have done more looking to try to satisfy the needs of our community. We can't keep taxing. Thank you.
Councilman Jones?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to call for the question.
Just, just for clarification, was it Mr. Vogler that seconded that amendment? Yes.
Mr. Vogler seconded the motion.
Thank you.
Call or roll, please.
Mr. Shanks?
No.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
No.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Mr. Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mayor Gilstrap?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Dr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Seven-two passes.
Motion approved.
Yes, sir.
Item number three. Increase personal property tax. What's your pleasure? Councilman Miller?
Okay. An ordinance amending, I'd like to propose an ordinance amending and reordaining section thirty-seven dash thirty of the Danville City Code to increase the personal property tax from $3 per $100 assessed value to $3.50 per $100 assessed value, effective January 1st, 2018. Final adoption.
Second, Councilman Jones. Discussion? Call or roll, please.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mayor Gilstrap?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Dr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Shanks?
Aye.
Nine-zero.
Number four. Motion approved. Number four, ordinance amending, uh, Danville City Code to increase tax on airplanes. What's your pleasure? Councilman, uh, Shanks?
Uh, yes, Mayor. I move for adoption of ordinance amending and reordaining section thirty-seven dash thirty-six of the city of Danville Code to increase tax on airplanes from 0.30 cents per $100 of value, assessed value, to 0.60 dollars per hundred of assessed value, effective January 1st, 2018. That is a motion that is slightly different than the one in the handout.
Yeah. Please note, the motion is point six and not point seven. Is there a second to the motion? Is there a second to the motion? Motion fails for a lack of second. Item D, consideration of approving an ordinance to amend city code to increase real estate tax. What is your pleasure? Councilman Jones?
Mr. Mayor, I move adopt an ordinance amending and reordaining section thirty-seven dash twenty-seven, thirty-seven dash twenty-eight, and thirty-seven dash twenty-nine of the Danville City Code, thereby increasing the real estate tax from 73 cents on every $100 to 80 cents on every $100 to assessed value, effective July 1st, 2017.
Is there a second to the motion? Okay. Councilman Buckner. Discussion? Councilman Shanks?
Yes, Mayor. I just, uh, wanted to say that for the record, that I had come to the conclusion that I could support a, uh, increase from 73 cents to 78 cents per $100 value, especially if we, in that process, had tried to work with public safety employees as far as moving, and the traditional public safety employees, and, uh, trying to move their midpoint in salaries. There's not one of us that can't agree that public safety employees, and I'm referring to traditional public safety employees who happen to be, in my traditional thinking, uh, the police and first responders, the fire department, uh, those folks live in a different world than they did three years ago. And if we're going to increase taxes, I would have certainly hoped that somehow that would have been the topic addressed, instead of new initiatives for the city, and instead of trying to find places to trim back. Uh, uh, so, I actually... So, I actually could easily have gone from seventy-three to seventy-eight with that in mind. I'm having a real trouble right now going to the eighty cent mark, not including the public safety aspect of this. So, I just wanted to tell you how I felt, and I'm still waiting how I'm going to, but I understand the need to approve this, to keep some resemblance of a budget, but I'm still having trouble. That increase is so large and does not address public safety. Thank you.
Dr. Miller.
Well, I have trepidation that eighty cents is going to be enough to balance our budget, but I can, I will support this. This still is very much on the low side of taxes, you know, assessed value in the state. We're like number two lowest now, I think it'll make us fifth or something like that. We're still way below Martinsville, way below Lynchburg. And again, nobody's going to not come to Danville because of that. They're not going to come, they're going to not move to Danville because the schools aren't good and the police system's not good. And we've already seen that happen at the hospitals, Reverend Campbell testified. We lost a critical need specialist because his wife saw how the schools were, and the publicity the schools were getting, the bad publicity, and the bad publicity of crime in the town. So, that's why people don't come here. We need to have enough funding. This is not a huge increase. This takes us back to two thousand three. At one time, Danville was over a dollar real estate value. Two thousand three, we were at eighty cents. So, we're still going to be well on the low curve. It's not going to deter anybody from moving here. These other things are more important. So, I'll support the eighty. I wish it was more, but I'll support the eighty.
Councilman Vogler.
Yeah, I'll try to make this as quick as possible. As has been mentioned, the city manager's original proposal was an increase up to eighty-eight cents per one hundred dollars on the real estate tax. One of the ways that we brought that down some was I had requested that we look at our budget and find out how many one-time expenditures were in there and how much money that equated to. We found, I think it was roughly half a million dollars that was in there. That helped lower it some, and then I think there were some other tweaks that were made. I did want to point out that we're talking about going, adjusting up to eighty cents per one hundred. Within the past fifteen years, Danville's real estate tax, at one point, within the past fifteen years, was eighty-one cents per one hundred. Then it was cut down to seventy-seven, and then in two thousand eight, it was cut down to seventy-three. So, this vote tonight would actually be a return to about where we were fifteen years ago, and I think someone mentioned Martinsville for reference. Even, I think right now, we're, I know for a fact, we are the second lowest in the state at seventy-three cents. The only one lower than us is Williamsburg, who doesn't really depend on real estate taxes for revenue like most cities do because of tourism, the theme parks, and everything else they have. Martinsville, for reference, is at a dollar six per one hundred dollars. So, even us going to eighty, we're far below most of, I think Lynchburg, somewhere around a dollar ten, something in there, I'm not sure. But if I'm not mistaken, going to eighty, we would be the fourth or fifth lowest still in the state. So, I was opposed to the eighty-eight cents. I thought that was too big of a jump. I think because, I did want to mention this real quick, we talked about public safety and where the funding, there is increased funding to public safety in this budget, crime reduction specifically, and one of the things that was in there, and I asked for it to be put in there, and I'm thankful that it was, is a hiring of community service officers. There's two positions in there that will be hired in this budget. What these officers do is, is they handle the non-emergency calls that police officers are currently having to do. If you have a fender bender, if you have things that are non-life-threatening, non-emergency-type situations, we will have these, what they call CSOs in most localities, go to these situations, do paperwork, to do these things, and that's freeing up our police officers to be out working other things. So, that's going to have a big impact on crime reduction, on public safety. That's freeing up at least two fully sworn police officers who will not have to spend time filing paperwork for accidents and things like that. Other localities have done this and had a lot of success with it. That's in this budget, and this real estate tax is going to help fund things like that. And that's one of the main things that's in it. So, it's an increased investment in public safety, which is the only reason that I'm willing to even talk about it. I think, you know, it's no secret, I've been opposed to any type of increase in the past. This time, it is going specifically to something that I believe strongly in, and that's increased public safety investments. So, I will be supporting it.
I got a question. Dr. Miller, and then we have a citizen who wishes to speak on it.
Oh, just FYI, this is maybe off base. I kept wondering why Williamsburg was so low. Well, because the price of their houses, the value of their houses is much more, so they don't have to collect as much. But the other thing is, like, they hit you with a lodging tax, then they hit you with an occupancy tax, two dollars per room per night. You think that doesn't mount up? They hit you, so when you look at these different cities, you've got to see what else they're billing you for. If you just look at their lodging tax, but you don't look at the occupancy tax and the additional meals stuff they put in there, and their sales tax is higher than Danville's. So, you've got to look at apples and oranges. You look at Chatham, and you say, well, their tax is lower than ours. Yeah, but then they have to pay city and county taxes. So, by the time the net effect is, they're around eighty-one cents. So, when you, yeah, so you have to look at everything, all the additional hidden taxes these other communities pay, just FYI.
Please come forward, state your name, Mr. Scares, for the record.
Glenn Scares. I don't want to pay you an extra dime in any taxes, actually. And the reason is that you have not managed the money that you have spent properly, and I don't think it's right to gouge taxpaying, property-owning citizens for your mistakes. It's going to take you years to pay off all these debts that have accumulated because of the millions of dollars in bad investments that have been made with the prior administration. I don't feel responsible for that. I realize the bind that the city is in, but you put yourself here. Put yourself here by doing the wrong things, not concentrating on the things that you should have been doing, such as many of them that have been discussed tonight. These are things you have to do and you need to do. A lot of the things you did do are things that, in retrospect, had no business even dabbling in to begin with. So, I'm miffed about the whole thing. I understand you're going to do it, but please understand, I don't like it. And if I wasn't so old, I can eat at home, I can sleep at home, and I'm scared of airplanes, so that took a few out of that equation already. Personal property, not that big a deal. Real estate is a whole other issue. Danville seems to love to raise real estate values through dubious means. That's a personal gripe I have, but here, you're doing it right up front and out front, and it's significant. But folks, you're going to have to learn to live within your budget, do your job, and only your job, and don't try to make a Disneyland out of the Dan River and the Danville downtown, because I haven't seen that much change with all the money that's been spent. And when you spend millions of dollars, and it's going to take you twenty years to pay it back, or five years, or whatever the terms might be, I'm on a hook for that money. It's not your money. Technically, it's my money. And as long as I'm paying all of these taxes and supporting all of these things, I feel like you folks ought to have a little bit more consideration for our position. We're retired people here in Danville, the property owners, the taxpayers. Most of the young ones aren't even paying any of those things. Give me a break. Thank you.
Mr. Whittle.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. On this subject here, I know council had the three priorities, education, safety, and community development. And I got a problem with buying the white mill for three million bucks. And it might be a little outside of this increase in real estate taxes, but if you put a million to education, a million to safety, and a million to community development, it just doesn't seem like we'd have to write. Thank you, Mayor.
Call roll, please.
Mr. Whittle.
No.
Mr. Buckner.
Aye.
Reverend Campbell.
Aye.
Mayor Gilstrap.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Jones.
Aye.
Dr. Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Saunders.
Aye.
Mr. Shanks.
Aye.
Mr. Vogler.
Aye.
Motion approved. Ladies and gentlemen, we will take a five-minute recess. Motion approved. Ladies and gentlemen, we will take a five-minute recess. Ladies and gentlemen, we will take a five-minute recess. out there to please... No. Come back to their seats. (laughing). Clark, can we go ahead and start?
Uh, you don't have a... You have a quorum, so I guess they're ready for you to start.
I'd like to reconvene. A, under new business, consideration of adopting an ordinance to vacate property near College Avenue. Open the public hearing. Anyone here wish to speak on vacating property on College Avenue? Hearing done. Public hearing is closed. What is your pleasure, counsel? Councilman Campbell?
Mr. Mayor, I move for adoption of ordinance vacating approximately point zero six acre of public area near College Avenue.
Is there a second? Councilman Buckner. Discussion? Please call a roll.
Councilman Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mayor Gilstrap?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Dr. Miller? Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Shanks?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Consideration of adopting ordinance to amend the fiscal year 2017 budget for the victim-witness assistance program. Counsel. Councilman Buckner?
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2017 budget appropriation ordinance to provide for a grant from the state for a victim-witness protection program in the amount of one hundred seventy-three thousand, six hundred and eleven dollars and appropriating the same.
Second, Councilman Jones, first reading. Ordinance, uh, consideration of adopting an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2017 budget appropriation ordinance for grant funds for criminal justice services. Pleasure, counsel. Councilman Jones?
Mr. Mayor, I move with adoption of ordinance amending the fiscal year 2017 budget appropriation ordinance to provide for a grant from the state for a domestic violence victim program, granting the amount of forty-four thousand, six hundred and thirty-five dollars and appropriating the same.
Is there a second? Councilman Buckner, first reading. Consideration of approving a resolution to rejoin Blue Ridge Power Agency. Councilman Shanks?
Mayor, I move with adoption of a resolution authorizing and approving the rejoining of the Blue Ridge Power Association.
Seconded by, uh, Councilman Saunders. Discussion on the motion?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd like...
Councilman Campbell?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like for the city manager, if he could, explain to the citizens why we're doing this, please.
Yes, um, uh, this, uh, was, uh, a member organization that the city used to belong to, uh, a few years back and, uh, had decided to no longer be a member of, but, uh, under the new utility director and, uh, a new director for this organization, uh, the, uh, utility director has recommended that we rejoin this agency. Uh, their purpose is to advocate on behalf of municipally-owned, uh, power agencies, um, to help them, uh, with, uh, in the state government as well as to help them, uh, with consulting and providing support to make sure that we're as efficient as possible in providing the service. Uh, it was, uh, considered by the Utility Commission during their, the Utility Commission meeting, uh, about a month and a half ago. They approved it unanimously and, uh, they've recommended it to the city council.
Councilman Shanks?
He's, he summarized it very well and I, I had actually put together a little information for the public, so may I, may I? The, uh, and this may be some repetitive and some new, so, but the, uh, resolution to rejoin the membership in the Blue Ridge Power Agency, Danville was one of the first members, was the first member of the agency back in nineteen eighty-eight and it was, uh, set up in anticipation of, uh, deregulation of the power industry. Uh, membership worked out well for Danville during that period. However, when Danville joined Amp Ohio, uh, the feelings of the then-utility director felt like that, uh, being members of Amp Ohio and being members of the Blue Ridge Power Agency were duplicative and felt like that we could just get by with Blue Ridge being a member of Amp Ohio. Well, Amp Ohio's got a huge staff and they're including lawyers and lobbyists and they are very diligently working and watching over the, uh, national laws and regulations that are passed, but they, uh, they, uh, are across several states and they have a, do a less thorough job in following state legislature and state regulations. So, uh, the current director and the Utility Commission and, uh, staff at the Danville Power and Light all were of the opinion or the general opinion was that rejoining would be a good, uh, way to protect our interests, in particular with Virginia legislature and also serve on smaller services that we don't get from Amp Ohio.
Any other? Call roll, please.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mayor Gilstrap?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Dr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Shanks?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Consideration of approving a resolution to reduce the electric power cost adjustment. Councilman Shanks?
That, uh, that is item F, is that correct?
Item F, P.
Did you, uh, you want to do that?
We need to do item E?
E.
Is it P?
Yes, sir, renewable credits.
I'll, I'll be glad to do that, Mr. Sir.
Excuse me. Resell renewable energy, item E.
Okay, uh, Mr. Mayor, I move for adoption of resolution authorizing and approving the sale of renewable energy certificates associated with Schoolfield Hydro Plant, the Pinnacle's Hydro Plant, in interest that Danville Utilities has in the Kerr and Philpot Dams.
Second, is there a second to the motion? Councilman Saunders. Discussion. Councilman Shanks?
For the benefit of the public, may I? The, uh, uh, Virginia doesn't have a, a energy mandate in place where these renewable credits are required, but Danville does produce green energy in Virginia at its ownership in the Pinnacle Schoolfield Kerr Lake and Philpot Investments and may also own, uh, renewable energy certificates in the future in things like solar. So, this is a resolution that allows Danville Power and Light to sell its renewable energy credits to those investors on the commodity markets that operate outside of Virginia and it's an opportunity for, uh, not a huge money-making opportunity, but opportunity for, uh, income for the utility.
Any other? Call roll, please.
Mayor Gilstrap?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Dr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Shanks?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Now, 'cause, now, F?
Yes, sir.
Consideration of approving resolution to reduce the electric power cost adjustment. Councilman Shanks?
Uh, yes, Mayor, I move for adoption of a resolution to reduce, I'm sorry, a resolution of the Council of the City of Danville, Virginia, approving and authorizing transfer of six hundred and eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred and eighty-four dollars and thirteen cents from the electric restricted account to reduce the electric power cost adjustment balance.
Second, is there a second? Councilman Buckner, any discussion? Councilman Shanks?
I'm sorry, this, uh, seems to be a heavy agenda on the utility and I would, since I am a member of the Utility Commission, would like to help the public know what this is. So, uh, this in particular is, uh, and I, I need to give credit to the, the utility chairman, uh, Danville Utility, uh, Commission Chairman Philip Smith. He, uh, he's gonna term out here very soon and he's been, uh, chairman off and on over the last eight years or so, but anyway, uh, Mr. Chairman Smith came to the Utility Commission back around two thousand and eight, uh, I'm sorry, that two thousand and eight, Danville Power and Light invested in a, uh, invested heavily in a coal-fired power plant called Amp G-I-G-S, which was a coal-fired power plant in Meigs County, Ohio. Construction costs, the prod, uh, cost of the project continued to multiply as the economy solid and the war on coal gained momentum. The plant was eventually canceled in two thousand and nine, leaving investors in a precarious situation, which included Danville Power and Light. When the plant was canceled, Utility Commission Chairman Philip Smith advocated setting aside one point five million, I believe it was one point five million, for future use to pay off liabilities on this plant. Utility Mission, Commission incurred, uh, with recent developments, Mr. Chairman Smith has advocated using the leftover funds from that account to reduce the power cost adjustment balance. The balance is what, that balance is what everybody will see on their power and light bill, it's called a PCA, and that's a number that fluctuates from month to month. The higher that balance is, the more the PCA is on your bill, electric bill. So, uh, and, and using this six hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars of, of leftover funds from that account to reducing the PCA and therefore it's in the long run gonna help the, uh, Power and Light customer. And, uh, again, I'd like to give kudos to Chairman Smith for both set, uh, asking it to be set up and then realizing the account's pretty much been, uh, drawn down as far as it needed to be drawn down and the rest of the money is available to reduce the PCA. So, uh, thank you.
Any other discussion? Call roll, please.
Vice Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Dr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Shanks?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mayor Gilstrap?
Aye. Uh, G, consideration of adopting an ordinance to reflect changes in the city of Danville's personnel system. What is your pleasure? Councilman Jones?
Mr. Mayor, I move with adoption of ordinance amending the personnel system of the city of Danville, providing for the classification, compensation, and employee development for employment positions of the city.
Is there a second? Councilman Shanks. Discussion on the motion? Please call a roll.
Dr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Shanks?
Aye.
Mr. Vog, uh, Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mayor Gilstrap?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Consideration of approving a resolution to enter into a lease agreement for the registrar's office. What is your pleasure? Councilman Jones?
Mr. Mayor, I move with adoption of resolution approving and authorizing leasing the first floor of the, to the First Citizens Bank building at five thirty Main Street for the use by the city registrar.
Second, Councilman Whittle. Discussion? Please call a roll.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Shanks?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mayor Gilstrap?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Dr. Miller?
Aye.
Communications, city manager?
I've got nothing to say.
Deputy city manager?
Nothing to say, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
City attorney?
I wanted to brag, I wanted to congratulate my nephew who is at tonight's graduate of distinction ceremony. He was earlier this week, uh, at the honor graduates and is also a recipient of the Algepew Memorial Scholarship and the Andy Warren Memorial Scholarship, so congratulations to him.
Great. City clerk, not president, roll call.
Mr. Shanks?
Uh, yes, I'd like to, uh, I've got two items. And first of all, I would like to extend my congratulations to Galileo School, that, the Magnet High School up the road, to the students, uh, and faculty and the staff at Galileo School, and to the school board members that are present and the Danville School Administration. Uh, Galileo, again, was selected by the Washington Post, uh, just last week to be listed on the list that they put together annually of the most challenging high schools in Amer- America's most challenging high schools. Uh, Galileo, I think, has been on that list almost all of the last eight years and they're on it once again. I'm sure the school board and school administration is proud, so I would like to extend my congratulations to all those associated with Galileo School. Second, the only other item I wanted to mention, uh, is, as you know, to, earlier tonight, we chose not to pass the Mills tax. And, uh, due to a lack of a second on another tax that I had proposed, I was unable to say anything about it, so I'm gonna take this opportunity to do so. Because, truth of matter is, if you were all honest with each other, you'd realize we gotta come up with a whole lot of money to take care of that Mills tax. I mean, uh, yeah, Mills tax, and this was just some of it. And it was, it was one of the two, only two tax increases that made sense in my mind. Personal property tax made sense, because it is so low, and this tax makes sense. Let me just, I'm not gonna argue it here.
Real, real estate is. Personal, which tax is a little...
Personal property tax, I agree, made a lot of sense, a lot of sense. Real estate, I can go there quite, is enthusiastic, but on the aircraft tax, I can't. And just let me just say this, and I'm not gonna wear you out with it, but, uh, six of the pier airports were, were studied. Recommendation by staff came back seventy cents instead of thirty cents, but here's, here's what the deal is. If you own a twenty-five thousand dollar pickup truck, your personal property tax will now be eight hundred and seventy-five dollars. Now, if you can find an aircraft for twenty-five thousand dollars, the tax you'll be charged on that aircraft will be seventy-five dollars. It wasn't a big tax. It, it is clearly, if you look at the information that has been provided to all council members, Danville is by far, three times most of the time, sometimes two, by far the lowest. And it, it, and it was just, it made, it was one of the only two tax increases I thought made sense. That's it. Thank you.
Mr. Vogler? Yeah, I hadn't planned on talking about it since it didn't come to a vote, but I did, I think it's important people understand, just for clarification. The two-hundred percent tax increase that was proposed on airplanes would have generated, I believe, at most, and actually it would have been a little bit less than, less than twenty thousand dollars, uh, in new revenue. The Mills tax revenue was one point two million, one point two million versus twenty thousand. Um, forty percent of the airplanes that are currently housed at our airport are from outside of Virginia. Uh, twenty percent, I believe, are from North Carolina, that, a lot of which, and we've already gotten letters that would tell us such, would leave if the increase come, uh, would have happened. They stay here because it's a better, uh, rate. Um, that's all I wanted to say on, on that and it didn't even come to a vote. Cardinal Village is doing something really tremendous right now. I know Vice Mayor Jones and I were, were there yesterday to, to take part in, in some of it, but a lot of people stepping up. They're doing a mural there right now. Um, it's really fantastic and Vice Mayor Jones may wanna talk about it more, so I don't wanna get too in-depth on it, but Constance Covington and, and all the folks over there doing tremendous things and, and we need more things that bring people together in this city. And so I want to, to thank Constance and everybody involved with helping that. I want, when we were there, there were probably thirty, forty people that were helping out and doing, I, I know, uh, Sheila Baines is here tonight, she was there, she was one of them. Uh, and it was paint by number, I mean, if I can do it, anybody can do it. I think they're still working on it, so, you know, please stop by, if you've got twenty, thirty minutes, you can help out, it's a neat thing to be a part of. Festival in the Park is this weekend, others may talk about this, so I just wanna briefly mention that Sunday at two PM, they're having what they call a festival of sweets. I think you can sign up for this, they're having, it's like a, a baking contest, they're doing pies and all kinds of sweets. Uh, they asked me to be a judge and so, uh, it's a tough job, somebody's gotta do it, so I'll be there to try out all the, the sweets and the good food that, that folks make. Uh, that's, uh, two PM on Sunday, if you wanna get involved with that. The NCAA Division Three, um, USA South Tournament is this weekend at Dan Daniel Park and Averyd, of course, will be a part of it, but we're gonna have dozens and dozens of players from, from all across, uh, the region coming into our city, uh, for this weekend, for this tournament. We just finished up the junior college baseball tournament that was here the last few days. We talked a lot about sports tourism and I know some of us wanna see even more tournaments come in here. It's a fantastic thing that we've had in about a seven to eight day span. Two, uh, prominent baseball tournaments here in our backyard, with teams from all over coming in, so if you get a chance this weekend, go out to, uh, the Danville Braves Stadium and, and check that out, uh, Division Three baseball. Ballad Brewing will be opening on June second, I believe we're having the ribbon cutting at four PM. Uh, it's gonna be a fantastic time, that is our newest brewery that's opening down on Craghead Street. Uh, should be a great time. That also happens to coincide with my thirtieth birthday, so if you wanna come down and celebrate, I will be there. Are we buying? Well, I, I was hoping one of you guys would give me a, a birthday treat. I'm kidding. No, come down, we'll have a great time. I look forward to seeing a new business and many more that are coming, um, in the weeks ahead. Briefly, I just wanted to mention, some of you may be aware of this, that May is Mental Health Month, um, and, and we probably all know somebody who is affected by mental health, and I just wanted to, to point out and, and it's out across the town right now, but the latest issue of Showcase Magazine is specifically focused on, uh, mental health and we partnered with the Danville Pennsylvania County Services, uh, to, to prevention services and, and all their folks to, to do this and really proud of it and it really kinda sheds a light on a lot of the, the misconceptions people may have in regards to, to mental health, and so I'd encourage folks to go pick that up. Lastly, um, it was, was mentioned earlier, we, um, we lost a great citizen and a great man this past week, uh, Mr. Carter, and, um, I'm sure that, that maybe some other council members wanna talk about it, so I'll try to be brief, but I just wanna say that those who knew him know, knew how much he, he was an advocate for stopping the violence, reducing crime and, and really trying to bring people together in our community. And so it is obviously a horrible thing that has happened, but my hope would be that if we can try to find something positive to come of this, that people would step up and step forward and, and take on the mantra that he believes so strongly in, and to come together and try and stop the violence in our city. Um, and, and if you know folks who are involved in things that you know that they shouldn't be, please talk to them. Please try and, and do what you can do to, to, to talk some sense into folks. We've got too many young people involved in things that they know that they shouldn't be and they're throwing not only other people's lives away, their lives away, we're losing a lot of people. Um, and it, it breaks your heart to see it happen and so I, the police are doing just about everything that they can do, the police are doing a fantastic job. This is Police Week, by the way, and so I always wanna thank them. Um, and, and they're making a lot of progress in a lot of ways, but ultimately, it's gonna come down to us to do something about it. It's gonna take the community to step up and say enough is enough. So, I would have thought, hopefully by now, that that... have thought, hopefully by now, that that would have already happened, but, you know, now is the time, now is the time. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Whittle.
Yeah, just, I, I want to just thank all the city staff and also for the, uh, citizens that show up and, uh, voice your opinion, it, it counts, it makes a difference. Thank you.
Mr. Buckner.
Yeah, I too would like to send my condolences to the family of Mr. Haywood Carter, such a senseless, senseless act. Um, pray that, uh, God will be with their family during this tough time. Uh, also, I'd like to remind everybody that, uh, June third, uh, on Bridge Street is the first, uh, food truck rodeo for the city of Danville. It's, uh, June third on Bridge Street from, uh, eleven to six. Um, hope everybody can make it out today, it'll be a fun event, uh, lots of people coming from, from all over just for that event, and, uh, lots going on that day. Um, that's it tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Reverend Campbell.
Yes, very briefly, glad to see the political process tonight, engagement with the citizens, that's what we want to do and to seek. I also send my regards out to the Carter family, also to Dr. Zachary Hurston and the passing of his mother, and the funeral is on tomorrow. And lastly, we want to continue to pray for our country and pray for direction, we're at a very critical time there, and, um, we just want to pray that we'll move in the right direction. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Gilstrap.
Uh, yes, I too like to, to make note of the N C double A Division Three Baseball Tournament, and the many rooms that these teams and visitors are going to be, uh, staying in our hotels, and in Festival in the Park, and the thousands of people that come to Festival in the Park, that, uh, all of these will be paying Mills Taxes and room taxes, and we need it badly. Uh, and we, we, I don't, I think our visitors should assist us in paying for our, uh, services. Anyway, thank you. Uh, had the opportunity to, and, and with the Vice Mayor, go to Gibson School, uh, met with a first grade class, and I was very impressed. These first graders read to us beautifully, and they, uh, sang to us the songs that they had written. They'd written songs and sang them, and then invited us to lunch, and it was just a delight, and I was so impressed with these young minds, um, and the, the school system at Gibson, so thank you for inviting us and, and, uh, thank everyone for watching and for being here and, and putting up a little over two hours of, uh, explanation. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Jones.
I think it's been mentioned earlier tonight, uh, Mr. Carter, AKA Biscuit, it's been so much conversation and sadness in regards to Biscuit, uh, his passing and what has taken place with his wife. I've talked to some friends of mine, and several people ask, what does the city do? And what the city has asked for violence is our number one goal that we're trying to tackle, and you heard it in Dr. Miller's prayer. And what we're asking people over and over, and you heard us say this, at the opening of the Police Precinct on Third Avenue, if you see something, say something. That's what the citizens can do. This is very, very disturbing, what's happening in our community, but it takes all of us together to try to resolve this, and to the family, our prayers and our thoughts are to you, and we'll continue to pray also for Mr. C G Hurston, who's on our board, who lost his son, and as Councilman Campbell stated, Zack Hurston lost his mother. It's a lot of sadness in our communities going on, and we just all need to come together. To my son, who's sending me pictures of him in the graduate of distinction program tonight at the institute, Mr. Gould, you're absolutely right, some beautiful pictures are coming in, and we got some positive things, some outstanding things going on with our young people, but one of the persons or people we really don't give credit to, and grad, as graduation is approaching, is our teachers. Thank you all so much for all that you have done for our young people and continue will do for our young people, and there's a young lady sitting in our audience tonight, if you go to the Festival in the Park on Sunday, she's gonna be emceeing and singing, and she has on purple, so I won't call her name, you just need to go to the Festival in the Park and see Jessica Griffin. Thank you, Mr. Miller, thank you so much.
Mr. Jones, if you will send your son a Wahoo Waa from me, please.
Thank you, thank you.
Dr. Miller.
Uh, yeah, I was at, uh, Blue Park Monday night, and they're already preparing for the festival, they were getting things together and, and rides and things like this, so this is gonna be a great festival this year, and as mentioned, Jessica is gonna be singing on Sunday, so, the, the entertainment should be superb. Uh, again, I want to thank our teachers, uh, you know, I, as I look back, I can remember every single teacher I had, one through twelve, and, you know, they make a, they make a powerful influence on you, they, they, uh, they shape your life and, uh, guide you hopefully in the right direction, so we have to, it's imperative we have a good school system, imperative we have good teachers. And then finally, I went, I went a little sightseeing in the area, you know, I always like to go out to other communities and see what they have that we don't have or what we have better. So we went to Floyd, Virginia, and Floyd's not a very big place, but it's a, it's a happening place. Uh, they have entertainment Friday and Saturday night at Floyd Country Store, there were three different venues with music going on, some classical, some bluegrass, uh, they really got it together up there. The, uh, we went, I went, there's a friend of mine, Bill Hickson, retired physician for years here in Danville, we went bar hopping in Floyd, like, all two bars, but, uh, we had a good time, uh, and, you know, it, they, they've got it together. Now, their community market they brag about is only a fraction as good as ours is, so we have it on them there. Our community market's one of the best in the state, but they've gathered people there who are musicians, art, artisans, artists, pottery makers, book writers, children's book writers, uh, they've made a cultural center out of Floyd, Virginia, and it's amazing. Uh, people are attracted there, people of the arts, and I think we could do the same thing here in, in Danville, and I think we need to emulate that by creating an art district, and once you get the nightus for that, then other artists come, and more artists come, and then people come to see these artists, and, and you ought to go up there and see what they've done with their city. The whole town is a cultural center now, and a magnet for artists. And again, thank you for all the people that came out and spoke on the schools, thank you for Mr. Gould, I'm sorry you had to give up the other opportunity tonight, but we appreciate you coming, thank you.
Mr. Saunders.
Yeah, my condolences to the families of C G Hurston, who lost, uh, their son, uh, great radio personality, D V D V A, and George, and we're really gonna, gonna miss him. To Dr. Zachary Hurston's, uh, mother, a wonderful lady, Elizabeth Jefferson as well, gonna miss her, and also a condolences, condolences to the Carter family. Um, Biscuit, um, great guy, great guy, and talked to his wife, talked to his family, talked to his children, he will be certainly sadly missed. Um, crime of any kind is, is bad, uh, death is, is always sad. To lose someone that you, that you know, who's a pillar in the community, and someone who really gave his time, resources, and a lot to people, and especially young people, and to lose his life the way he did is very, very sad. But I do want to say something, and this is my view, and I think I'm correct, I've been hearing a lot of people say that Biscuit had a habit of flashing money. He had a habit of taking money out of his pocket and showing a roll of money. That is not true. I knew Biscuit, okay? Biscuit had many issues. In addition to having only one leg, he only had one eye. He was blind in his left eye and poor vision in his right eye. He had to hold his money up close to see if it was a five or a ten or a twenty or a one. He wasn't flashing money. So, for those who thought that, not true. For those who are saying it, please stop. It was the only way he could see how much money or what money he should pull to pay for whatever he's, he's, he was purchasing. Great guy, um, met him more than fifty years ago, rekindled our relationships serving in the Army. He had just finished a full tour of duty in Vietnam, came to Germany, we met in headquarters, and renewed the friendship, and he's been doing a lot to raise money for disabled veterans, uh, keynote speaker this last April raised a lot of money. Just a great guy. So, I hope we remember the great people in our city, those who are still here and those who've gone on, and not just forget them days afterward, look at their life and what good they did, and make a pledge to emulate that for the rest of our lives. And I want to thank Danville Police Department for all you all are doing, and I know that you're being very aggressive, and thank you for that, but this was a, a senseless, senseless loss, and a great man is no longer here. Please pray for his wife, for his family, and please pray for our community. In addition to loving our country, Biscuit loved Danville. So, for God and country, thank you, Biscuit, and thank you, Biscuit's family, for sharing him with us for sixty-eight years. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Meeting adjourned.